Okay, I call to order the Roseville Commissioner regular workshop meeting and also we're going to have a business meeting starting at around seven o'clock. Appreciate everybody in attendance. We have a few here. Thank you for coming out. Looks like we have the board here except for Michelle. As you can notice, Commissioner Madley is not here. I think she got an illness in the family and couldn't make it tonight, but we'll be thinking about her. Hope everything work out with that and we'll be thinking about it a lot. So with that, we will start our business meeting. The first item we have is strategic planning kickoff. Kelly, I see your name on there.
Sure. So Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. Tonight is the start of our strategic planning process and I want to make sure that I acknowledge Eric and what he's done to get to this point. And he will be the primary staff on this throughout the process and you'll see him and Fountain Works several times over the course of the next six months or so. And I'll let them explain the process. So with that, Eric, do you want to do some introductions and come on up and introduce the process or do you want me to introduce Warren? You go ahead.
We don't, we don't have a lot of time and so I want to not be in the way of Warren getting up and facilitating this conversation with you, but this will, I think will be a very great process. I'm doing my best. We're doing our best to make sure we chunk it to where we pull you in for the things, for the time and be super concentrated with our time. And then we have a executive team meeting coming up and then we have, will we come back together in January? We'll be engaged in the community. And so there'll be a lot of work going on behind the scenes. We'll do our best to keep you informed and give you updates as to what's going on. Also be sure to get your feedback and your input at every turn. So I will toss it to Warren and you will all begin to know each other over the next few months. And so I'll just let them go.
Thank you, Eric. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
We are so glad to be here and we're glad to kick this off. I'm Warren Miller with Fountain Works and my colleague Danielle Bedaki.
Hi, everyone. Nice to meet you.
And we want to use this opportunity to make sure that you understand the strategic plan update process that we're going to be going through. And also make sure that we have a chance collectively to understand what success look like for, for this project overall. What are some of the big questions and what are some of the things since you've last updated your strategic plan that you think are important, you're proud of, that you can, you want to continue to build on? So this is, as Eric said, we're going to walk through the process. It's going to be interactive and we really want to make sure that coming out of this, you feel clear about what, what you're going to get out of this and that if you have questions or things that we need to know in order to shape or modify the process, we have a chance to do that tonight. So really glad to be here and as I introduce myself, Danielle and also Matty Shea. So this is going to be the team. We're, we're here in the triangle, so we're close by and that's one of the things we're excited about is that we, you know, we have an easy opportunity to continue to work in person. Or we've been working with Eric and with Kelly and so we're going to be your team and excited to get started. So the first thing that we want to do is we want to step back and understand what are some of the major milestones? I want to make sure I stay close to the mic or the town clerk will get upset with me. Want to make sure we understand major milestones over the last three years or so since you last updated your strategic plan. And so we've given you some really high-tech tools, sticky notes and a Sharpie. They should be at your, at your desk. And we'd like you to just take a moment and write down one idea per sticky note. And these are things that you're proud of. These are major milestones over the last three years that we're going to go ahead and capture on this board. So we're going to give you just a moment to think about this and then we're going to start to compile. Okay? Major milestones, accomplishments that you're proud of over the last three years.
You want all of them on one sticky?
One, one per sticky, one idea.
I missed that. Thank you.
Yes, of course.
Having a staffing plan. We went through a staffing process so that we were able to increase our staff in the right areas.
Great. So staffing plan, new developments, and then also the wayfinding, the signage here in town. Great. Mayor Curran, we'll come over to you. What are some of the accomplishments of the last three years that you're proud of?
Yeah, it looks, looks like some of them becoming the repeats. I had to start at a Main Street vision.
Start of the Main Street.
Vision, which is the construction of that.
Yeah.
You had to, you couldn't miss it when you come into town.
Oh, I saw it. What was, what is it about that? What are you particularly proud of about that? What's, what's exciting?
Able to do it. I mean, it looked very difficult at one time.
Yeah.
With the acceleration of all the, all the costs that went into that. I mean, it, I don't know, it went up millions of dollars and we had to work really hard to get it, to keep it going. I mean, it was, it was tough. Cause we, we got it going through the, what do you want to call it? Inflation time?
Yeah.
Where all the prices is going up and the bids was 60%, 40% to 60% more than what we were thinking. So it was tough. It was tough.
Yeah.
It is, it is going.
We'll capture that. What are some of the other accomplishments?
Dan hit on this one, but I was, I was saying the success of the veterans. Our efforts with that was, was very successful, I think.
Great.
Another one is the Public Works Building. I don't know if we mentioned that one or not.
No, that's not, the Public Works Building?
Yeah, that's really our first building. The town has really done that size. I mean, we don't have buildings and that's the first one. I think this one flows into Cobblestone. I'll just say all that, our economic development progress that we've made, which is a lot. I mean, you know, you've got Cobblestone, you've got Wallbrook, you've got the Main Street, you've got other buildings along there. So, you know, that's came, that's come along. And then I think this is the last one. The last one I had was the hiring of assistant manager, HR director and a communications specialist.
Great.
I think those was big accomplishments.
Do a round of applause, right? Yeah.
Kelly should be doing a round of applause.
Yeah. Excellent. Great, great. Thank you. Commissioner Bilga.
I couldn't think of any, no. It took all mine.
We've got more sticky notes.
So I'll go with the ones that are kind of up there already. The Main Street project is one. Commercial development is another one. And then veteran banners. That's kind of an ongoing thing. I think that's, I'll be proud of that one no matter what. So always.
Very successful.
Signature now.
Tree production in our new LDO. I feel like we went along with that and added more protections for stuff like that and we'll keep adding to that as well.
Good.
Greenway additions. We keep adding to our greenways and everything else just to kind of make sure that we have our own network and we're keeping up with that. And the last one I have is our pollinator garden installations that we started in the last year or so. We have two so far and keep adding to that as well.
Yeah, outstanding. Great. Okay. I mean, this is already interesting that we've got a lot of different ideas here. Commissioner Seed.
All right. So I have repeats, the HR, Cobblestone, Wallbrook. I have that we have a town hall concept plan that we have adopted. The beginning of the Main Street project that was already up there. And we have had updates at our Redford Park, our lights. And our park has been updated a little bit over there. And we have a bike and pedestrian plan.
Bike and bike ped plan. Excellent. Commissioner Elect, would you like to add to the mix here? I saw you wrote something down.
I did and fortunately, everything I was thinking was already been up there. I didn't want to write this for writing. And I, I'm guessing the public works town hall plan is probably the same thing.
Public Works. That's different. Yeah.
The north side and town halls on the south side.
Write it down. Public's work building.
Well, you, you both, both have been said, so.
Good.
Oh, Public Works right there. I will add, can I add one?
You absolutely can.
Just thought of it. Public art. We have murals. Woo-hoo. Paul, I can't believe you didn't say that one, so I'm stealing from you.
I got nervous, sorry.
The murals.
Commissioner Sutton, is this, just in the last three years, this is in?
It was just done a couple of months.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Why is that, why is that important for you?
I think it just shows that we're intentional about making our town look better and they're neat murals and it's kind of a scavenger hunt. Find the murals. It just adds an element of interest. I love it. I drove up today and I was like, I got to see it when it was light and I was like, oh, that looks so good.
Yeah.
And personality.
Yeah, exactly.
Have another one, sir.
Yeah, please.
Public safety.
Yeah, I'll go meet you then.
Yeah, say, say more about that one.
Say again, sir?
Say more.
Say more? Roseville for the last two years running, probably three counting that year, the safest city to live in, in North Carolina.
In North Carolina. Yeah, that's, that is something to be proud of. Yeah.
Going for a three-peat.
Yeah. Great, great. Mr. Manager.
I only really have one end value, the town campus, but also staff support and resources. To me, I don't know how I count it. I didn't write down, but I wanted to say survival and kill the 21st.
Oh, that's a good one.
I mean, that was a period.
Yeah, how do you forget that?
We're still getting a hangover for that.
Yeah.
But I think we all came out on as a community, as an organization on the pride side of that. A lot of, there's a lot of different technicals still hanging on with that, the virtual and health and everything else. But just the fact that we all came out okay on that is a big deal, I think, for us.
Yeah, very good. Anything else that just, this sparked something that you'd add? And we only gave you just a couple of minutes here. So anything else that just you want to add to the mix?
Dave, you want to add something?
No, I've been advising others and upon the advice of counsel, I've remained silent.
You're tired of advising.
All right.
I hear you.
So what, when you, when you, I know it, you can't read it maybe from a distance, but when you listen to each other, what, what are some of the big themes? When you look at what you've done, because three years ago, we were right in the middle of COVID. And you think about where you've been in just three years. What are some of the big themes that you see? I mean, what's the story over the last three years?
Main Street.
Main Street.
Wallbrook, Cobblestone.
So these developments, economic development. Beautification.
Safety.
Safety.
I think a lot of collaboration amongst staff because our staff, we don't, we still don't have a lot of staff compared to, when I look up there, all the stuff that's being done. We can sit up here and dream it and wish it and visualize it, but somebody has to execute. So our staff having to collaborate and do different things, I think that collaboration is strong.
Yeah, you know, Sheila mentioned collaboration, but it's also a lot of work. It's a lot of work that, you know, it's, it's, it's the duck under the water.
The legs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It looks like we've cruised, you know, just cruised for the last three years to get to this point, but it's a lot of work. It's a lot of, a lot of effort.
This is a great story to tell. I'm always talking about telling the story. Tell your story or someone else will tell it for you. And I would love to see us tell this story of what has been done over the last three years because the public doesn't get to hear it. They get to hear components of it.
Right.
But it all together comprehensively, there's a lot that's been done.
And it's a lot in the pipeline too.
Yeah, a lot coming.
You've got, yeah, you've got.
Wake County Public Library is a big thing, you know, kind of working pretty hard on that. We'll find out next fall in the bond whether it gets passed or not, but you know, we've put a lot of effort in that.
Yeah, and you have other plans that you mentioned, the bike ped plan. You talked about other, the town campus plan, facility plan.
Something else that we've started, and this has been a collaboration amongst the board, is really asking developers to donate homes. To our first responders, you know, our nurses, our teachers, you know, first responders. So that has happened in the last couple of years. I always say you have not because you asked not. So we had a developer build a road. You have not because you asked not. So those are things that I've seen progress over the last two or three years that, you know, is pretty phenomenal.
Yeah. Well, as we, as we think about doing a strategic plan, it's always important to just stop and start and say, well, where have we been? You know, what are the things that we've been working on? And you have a, in front of you, I think many of you have a placemat in front of you that has, that you can refer to. So you have this plan and you've been working and you've been accomplishing these things. And this is an opportunity to continue on forward, to, to check that vision of where we want to go. You know, where are we today? Who are we today? Where do we want to go? You know, what are the things that we really value as a community that we care about? And then how are we going to get there? What are the things that we need to really focus on? And it's a chance to check that plan that you have, update it. Maybe there are some things that have changed. Cause I think the plan was adopted right around, Kelly, right around?
The framework of this is 40 years old.
Yeah, right before, right coming into COVID, right? Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So you, you know, there's been a lot of change and this community's changed. So this is a chance to step back, think about it with your staff, for you to step away to think about this, to get the community input. And to, and to make sure that you've got that clear picture of where you want to go. So I have a couple of other questions that I wanted to ask you and this is all part of helping us make sure that we're, we're going to help facilitate and do the right things to guide this process. What we want to do is these, when we think about the strategic plan, we've got these three goals. We think about a clear vision, one that you can tell the story to the community, one that you're really clear about as an organization, as a board. So your role as a board is to set that vision. So, your role as a board is to set that vision so that staff knows what you want to do, what they need to focus their time and, and resources on. That you're going to take another look at your goals over the next three to five years and see if you need to make any, any updates to the goals and then the priorities within those goals. And this is going to help inform your departmental work plans. So, they get, you know, you set that big framework of where you want to go, and then this informs what the departments are going to do. That's big picture, what we're doing with the, with the strategic plan. And so, I'm going to give you just a, just sort of a high level flyover of the timeline here. We're, we're getting started. And we, the very first thing that we're going to be doing coming out of this session is we're going to have, we're going to have a workshop with your senior staff, with your staff, get their input about what they see as the current situation, what they see as threats, what they see as opportunities, what they see happening that they think is important to pay attention to, their impressions of what, what the community needs, what community is saying to them. And that's going to be fed into, and we're going to bring that to you in a retreat that we're going to have. And that's scheduled for January 26th. So, that's on the books. It's going to be, and Commissioner Sutton, you're welcome to, it's open to the public, so.
I'm good. Because they're going to do a fine job.
That's set, that's going to be a day-long session, and that's going to give you time to step back in a different kind of format. That's going to be at the.
Wake of Life Building that we did two years ago.
We did it last time?
Yeah. So, you're going to have a great facility, a day to really dedicate some thinking to this. And what, what we'll do in that session is we'll take that staff input, we'll take a look at the current plan, and then we're going to develop, you will be developing a new, updated strategic plan framework. So, we're going to come out with that, those, that, that vision, those goals, those major areas of focus. Coming out of that retreat, we're then going to bring this out to the community, and you'll have some, there'll be some listening sessions. So, I'll, I'll say a little bit more about what those community feedback events are currently scheduled to be. Coming out of those, we'll, so we'll share this plan, get some feedback on it, and then have a chance to refine it. And maybe they'll make, you know, there'll be some tweaks to it. And then, you'll have another chance to look at this framework and say, all right, you know, we've had a chance to hear from the community, the community got a chance to react to this. Let's refine, let's refine this plan. And then, our, our schedule is late April, early May, to have this new updated plan ready, ready to go. So, that's, that's big picture. So, what's this look like? These are the different steps in the process. We're meeting with Eric every other week to make, we've got scheduled calls to make sure, he's making sure we're on track, that we're doing the things that we need to be doing. So, we have standing meeting with him, and we're going to continue that throughout the entire process. As I said, Danielle will be, Danielle will be our project manager and making sure that we're, we're up to date on everything we need to be doing. And then, as we said, we're scheduled, we're going to be scheduling that staff input session before your retreat. And then, we'll have the retreat where we develop the vision and framework. Then, we're going to have the community feedback event. So, those are going to be in that late February, March timeframe. Then, developing and refining that strategic plan is going to be late March to April. And then, as I said, end of April, early May is when we'll have that plan. So, this is, this is the overall timeframe. And I know I'm throwing a lot at you, so I, I will pause in just a moment to see if you've got some questions. When we engage the community, we want to make sure that we give people the opportunity to participate, it's accessible, that we, we create a really good, safe, constructive place for people to have the conversations about the future of the community, that they feel really confident about, about the town. And it's an opportunity to build trust in what you're doing and to be engaged and, and provide meaningful impact. We're going to, we're going to set it up to be very much a workshop style, and we approach it as the community are the experts. You know, this is their community, they know what they value, they know what they care about, and it's really about valuing their input in this process. So, we have a couple of, of different things that we're going to do. We're going to have one community conversation where we're going to be inviting any and all folks to participate in that. We are going to have a roundtable conversation where we're going to have some of your more engaged community leaders together in a, in a, in a meeting. So, these must, these will be some of your civic and business leaders coming in, sitting down, talking about where are we, where do we want to go as a community? And we're also going to have a web-based survey. So, we want to make sure we've got multiple ways for people to participate, to engage in this. So, if they can't attend an in-person meeting, we have some other, some other ways to engage them. And depending on the participation, depending on the kind of feedback, there could be some other additional feedback opportunities. Maybe it's a community event that we do, some intercepts, maybe there's information that we put out for people to, to learn about the survey. So, there, there are some potential other kinds of public input opportunities that we might do, depending on how, how we feel about the, the participation that we're getting.
Let me ask you, do those stakeholders include HOA leaders? We have a pretty engaged community, and we have a lot of communities, a lot of subdivisions that are developing, that have very active HOAs. I think that's a good stakeholder to engage with as well. I didn't hear you say it, but it may be on your list.
Well, you know, and that's part of the conversation that we're going to have with staff. You know, what, what are the connections that you already have? What, you know, Nextdoor is a great resource now, you know, and, you know, can we, can we reach out through some of these different channels to get input from people? You know, I think it's really, the more input you get, I think the more people are going to appreciate what comes out of this whole process. Yeah. And I, and, and one of the specific questions is what's success look like for community engagement? I do want to, I really want to dive into this a little bit more, yeah.
Sort of my question is, what level of participation should we anticipate with the community?
How many?
Yeah, what percentage of the population?
Yeah, I, you know, I think you've got, you, you probably have some experience and, you know, and Eric and Kelly may be able to speak better to that based on some of the previous community outreach that you've done for plan developments. So, you've got probably a, a certain expectation of this, when we've done this before, we expect, you know, 5% or 10% of people to participate. What we're going to try to do is we're going to try multiple channels to be able to let people know that we want their voice to be part of this, that we want them to engage, we want to make it easy for them. So that, you know, the town has, has an infrastructure right now of engaging the community. So, we want to, we want to tap into that. And, and I don't know if Kelly, if you want to add to that, or Eric?
Yeah, I don't, really, I mean, those of you who were here four years ago, right? We did that one community, we had, we had a good turnout, Michael. We only had one community engagement. And I think we've heard from this board, we'd like to see more. But it was, it was, it was a decent participation, probably about 100 folks have participated. But with this, there's going to be more. And I don't have, I have no prediction, but there will be more. But that was our previous experience about four years ago.
Yeah. To echo that, that's something that we are building out, infrastructure for communications, something we're building out. With the addition of our communication specialists last year, we said we want to focus more community, communication and engagement. And so, this is something that we're figuring out as we update our website, as we update our news blasts, as we really figure, as we really start working through and getting more established on our different social media platforms as well. One thing we've been doing is reaching out to HOAs with specific, to, with relation to specific projects. But now, we're going to be doubling down for that with a strategic plan, each one of the HOAs, also the school system. June has been making great inroads with meeting with every single one of the leadership among schools. And so, we'll be learning, we'll be doing a lot and learning a lot through this process. And so, we look to kind of establish those relationships and those means of communication to where we can continue to leverage those even after the strategic plan is done, communication wise. So, we'll try to find more technology-based ways to get people to sign up to do the virtual survey as well. And if we don't see the response rate or the diversity of response that we looked at, we've built it in to have additional sessions. We've put that into a contract with them to have additional sessions and workshops to be able to make those specific reaches if we miss a specific, a specific sect of our residents.
Eric, Warren, if I could, I think in that roundtable conversation, it would be very helpful to get your input also. So, Warren said staff, but I also think that's a great idea by Commissioner Sutton. So, I think you have just as good a knowledge of who also. So, I think we'll take a moment probably prior to that, make sure we reach out to you and say, who do you think? So, you can give us some feedback too, and make sure we reach out to folks that you think would be useful and purposeful too, so.
Yeah. Yeah. And again, the timing of this will be February, March timeframe when we're really doing that community engagements. So, we've got a little bit of time to, to get ready for it. Let me go through, that, that runs through the process. So, if we look at just the overall schedule, any questions so far about the process itself that we're going to be going through, about what your role in the process is?
So, if I may, just to comment. So, you have this timeline, and then about a month and a half from now, you're going to have another column over here, which is going to take some of your time also, which is called the fiscal year 2425 budget. And that's going to have a similar kind of timeline. And we've talked about that, and we recognize that doing both of these is a big ask of you all, but you're going to have to kind of step in and out of both those over the next few months, right? And we'll be, we'll be very deliberate in our conversations. This is about the strategic plan, or this is about the budget. But they will co-mingle. There's no doubt in my mind. But just kind of keep in mind that there's going to be another column of ask, of commitments on this, and we've talked a little bit about that, I've shared those with you. But so that, and that all kind comes to head that you had to adopt the budget by July 1 of '24. So, just kind of keep that in mind, if you don't mind.
Yeah. And one of the things about this timeline is your retreat, the strategic planning retreat is in January, so that's in time to help inform that budget process. So, that's, that was an intentional date that we wanted to make sure it was early enough in the process. I, you know, I think one of the questions, and Danielle, I'm going to let you, if you want to take some notes on the, on the computer, is, you know, we've walked through this, we're going to go through this process. And, you know, one of the big questions we have is, when we finish up in May, what's success look like for you? You know, how would you know that this was successful? Or if we're standing here three years from now, you know, what's success look like? And I, I'd really like to hear from you all, what, what you want to make sure you get out of this process. So, open it up. What does success look like for you?
I think it's just a clear picture of where you're going. I mean, you've got to know, if we get through the whole process and we still are saying, well, we, we still want to do this, or still want to do that, and they haven't been included in that process, that doesn't make any sense. Like, it should be a clear plan.
A clear picture of where you're going, a clear plan. What else would you say is important? Commissioner Olson?
I was striving for efficiency in how we handle business.
Yeah. Okay. Efficiency in how you handle business? What kind of business? Operations of the?
All aspects.
All aspects. Good. Okay.
I think, I think it has to be doable.
Doable.
You have to be able to achieve it. Because I'm kind of a believer, if we put in a plan, we need to make sure we get it done.
Yeah.
So, it has to be really doable. Everybody has to buy in and say, we can get that done.
Yeah.
Realistic goals. Making sure that those goals are realistic.
Yeah.
Doable, realistic goals.
And also having the difference between a short-term goal and a long-term goal.
Okay.
Something that can be done in two years versus something that's probably going to take three to five.
Three to five. Okay. Good.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
I'm just thinking of a comprehensive, I know we have a comprehensive plan, but a way for us to step back and make sure that it, it's all cohesive and works together.
So, that this plan works with your other plans, your comp plan?
Everything works all together.
Yeah. It's sort of like a wedding cake, you know, and your strategic plan is sort of that bottom layer. That's that, that, that overarching framework. And then, your comp plan and some of your other plans provide more, you know, maybe a land use aspect or a policy, you're more detailed. But it's all, it's a foundation, but it has to work with those other plans.
Also, I'm thinking success by seeing the interest of the town.
So, people participating, that's a success. Yeah.
Yeah. And I, I think it has to be for everybody. It has to be all-inclusive. Everybody has something to gain from it. Every 12,000 people, all 12,000 have something to gain.
Yeah. Good. Good. These are great. Any, anything else?
I think it needs to be accessible.
Sorry, accessible?
That's accessible, easily accessible to the public.
The plan, oh, so they can, they know what the plan is? Okay.
They don't have to search for it, like, where, where is it? Where is it?
Yeah.
And, and I use the example of the, our developments that we're doing in town. And I go try to find one. If you don't know the name of it, right, you can't find it. So, it needs to be accessible to the public and readable to the public. And I say that not to insult anyone, but on average, in America, we read on a 10th grade reading level. Doesn't need to be all these highfalutin words. I always say I try to speak in very plain, basic terms that everyone can understand when you talk about inclusiveness.
Yeah.
I think, I agree.
Allegedly.
I agree with the commissioner there. I think, I think it needs to be built for the public and not built for us and the staff. And a lot of things like she's talking about, the, the power users is really good at it, but the public is not. And it really needs to be built for the public. And we'll figure out how to use it, even if it's a little bit less efficient.
Yeah.
It needs to be really good for the public.
Yeah. Great.
I think is what you said.
Keep it simple.
Yeah. Keep it simple. Anything else you want to make sure you get out of this? And again, this is, we'll, it's a great opportunity. You can think about your la, your plan that you, that those of you who are involved in your last plan and all that, all that that did to help you. Anything else as you update that plan?
Yeah, I just, I don't know how to word it. I just don't want us to start over. And I think you mentioned it in your introduction, that it's going to be more of a continuation.
Right.
We don't need to, I mean, I feel like we've got a lot of momentum going with the town campus and all that kind of stuff. And we don't really want to reset.
Yeah.
I hear these companies doing reset. I don't think we need a reset.
Yeah. Well, and you just shared all of these things that you've just accomplished, you know, that you're, that you want to build on. It's not a, a, a right turn.
Right.
Let me, let me shift gears and ask another question. When you think about the next few years for the town, for the community, and where, you know, some of the, some of the big issues, some of the big questions that you think are really important, when you think about your plan for the future, your strategy for the future, what are some of the big questions that you're thinking about right now? What are some of the big issues that you know you've got to figure out? What are these things that are on your mind or the people?
Transportation.
Traffic.
Yeah, okay.
That's what I was first thinking about.
Yeah, traffic, transportation.
Trash pickup.
Trash pickup?
Yeah.
Okay.
Being proactive versus reactive.
All right. So I'm going to ask you if you can say more about that, being proactive versus reactive.
Yes. If we know that certain areas are going to warrant a traffic light, let's get ahead of that. But that's a DOT thing. That's not our board thing.
Yeah. Yeah. That tension of things that you identify and how can you, how can you get ahead of them? Yeah.
Even though it's DOT though, it's about relationship building. So even though it's DOT, I used to have a DOT friend. Yeah. Made some friends with DOT. I'm just saying.
What are some big questions or big issues that you're thinking about for the future?
Not that anyone's agreed on this, but we've been doing the Main Street education project.
Uh huh.
Making it walkable, bikeable. And to a greater extent, there's not a whole lot to walk to or bike to in between the two points. So one idea would be shops, restaurants, office space in the, within those two points and how we get from where we are today to get to there.
Yeah. So as you develop Main Street, how do you, how do you build that, you know, sort of that complete Main Street, that connectivity to amenities? Okay.
Yeah. I think it's, in our plan, it's two things missing that I would like to see the board think about. One has to do with our senior citizens. Almost create a senior citizen thing, sort of like we did for the veterans. I mean, a senior citizen focused thing. Then our senior citizen population are growing and we need to focus on that more.
Okay.
The second thing is, I guess what I call informal youth activities. We don't, I mean, we have good athletic programs, you know, you sign up for, but for kids, when they get out of school, our parks is not designed for them to go to and hang out and stuff like that. We need to, we need to think about how do we, what, how do we serve the youth informally, not the formal things we do, but more informally. And I don't think we, we've done, we don't talk too much about that, you know?
Yeah.
We don't have places for them to go and hang out.
Okay. Other things that you're, that you think are big, big questions as you think about the future? Commissioner Vilga?
Probably conservation of nature. Like, we, you know, we build and build and build and we don't, we never think about what we're losing. So I think planning ahead and knowing that we don't want to lose this and building around that, I think is the biggest thing and having an idea of how to do that.
So it's kind of, if you had to frame it in a question, it'd be, you know, how, how do we make sure we continue to conserve our, you know, our green spaces, our natural resources while we, as we grow?
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
And what, and also what can developers do to add to that? You know, they're building neighborhoods and everything else to help with where people need to live and everything else, but could it add to parkland we need? Could it add to greenways we need and this, that, stuff like that? So working with the developers to make sure we get all that.
Yeah. Good.
Sir, got another thing. With being proactive versus reactive.
Yeah.
Just thought about this. As far as in us taking a look at our comp plan, our transportation plan, as well as our land use map plan.
Yeah.
Especially the land use map. We can get a 15-passionate van, go out for a field trip, start looking at all of these vacant areas and start looking at what is already zoned for. And we can picture what we would like to see there versus a developer coming in and say, this is a piece of land I want to purchase. I want to rezone and I want to put X, Y, Z here. So that way it's more of our vision versus a builder vision.
And that connects with being proactive, you said.
Yeah.
And to piggyback on that a little bit, to, we, there are discussions that we've had, such as the development of Fowler Road and the industrial park. And I think that that's, those things need to be part of the conversation because that's what we are envisioning. But is it going to happen? How's it going to happen? When may it happen?
Yeah.
I think those are important things to consider if we're considering developments on those roads or, or bringing industri, industries to Roseville. I think that's, that needs to be part of the conversation as well.
Can I take staff privilege?
Please.
I would love to echo that a little bit, maybe say it a different way.
Sure.
What is our future? Are we, are we going to be a, because we're getting close to build-out folks. Are we going to be a bedroom committee or?
Correct.
Or something more?
Right.
Or, and I might say more right or wrong, but what are we?
Yeah.
Right now it's 98% bedroom.
So that's a big question that you're, that you're really thinking and you're nodding.
I think for this community, my perspective is it's a big question we need to ask pretty quickly to assess the future of where we're going.
This is, this is, this is very helpful. Anything else that you want to make sure we just capture here? Big questions?
92%. Sorry about that.
92%?
92, sorry.
92%. Okay, thank you.
I think our, the biggest thing is what, what do we want Roseville to be known for? Like, and it kind of works into all that, but you know, what's our, what's the overall goal? You know, what do we get, what are we offering people that move here? Like she, you said, it's, you know, it's just housing or is it this or that? Or we have attraction of some sort?
Okay. When I was out there looking at the mirror, I just started, my, mine was, what's our vibe? What is our vibe? Do we have a, do we have an identity, a vibe? I mean, public safety, right? But I mean, you know, just for you all, what is that?
I think my, my talking to people, a lot of that stuff doesn't come up. The thing that I think the people really is this small-town feel. They don't want us to lose this small, small-town feel. And, and I really think, I really think when talking to people, that's the first thing they talk about is keeping a small-town feel. We don't want to.
Yeah.
We don't want the massive people. We don't want the four-lane highways going through, you know, we, we want to keep the small-town feel. So as we do that, if we, if we don't, if we don't keep that, then we kind of miss the point of what everybody wants right now and why they come here.
I want to just go back, Commissioner Vilga. You said, you know, you asked us the question, what do we want to be known for? What, what do you feel like you're known for today? If you had to say, well, what are we known for today?
We're known for growing, getting out of hand, growing and stuff like that. But I think it's more than that. I think it's, you know, we've tried to branch out a little bit, like with the art stuff, you know, that, that's something new we've added. We're adding, we're known for our greenways, the small-town feel we're known for right now. But like, the other stuff is like, you know, history, natural history, that stuff, like, like, all that stuff gets missed, I feel like. So I think being a community that realizes what we have and, and protecting what we have and giving everyone the best, I think that's the, the biggest thing.
See, you have these things, but you're not necessarily known for them.
Right. Yeah. So, so like the, the Greenway stuff right now, so we're adding an outdoor museum to show, to highlight things for that. So like, that would bring people in. We would be known for that kind of thing. So you would know the history of our area and this and that, so.
Yeah. Let me shift gears and ask about the, just going back to the community engagement part of this. If we're really successful with community engagement, what's, what's success for you? When we do the community engagement part of this? Broad, broad participation. Yeah. Commissioner?
Conversation online in some of the next door, you know, and not all prompted by the town. Just conversation between the residents, us residents, online, no matter where that is, you know? I think that is success to me because if it's not always prompted by the town and we're just talking about, hey, Sheila, did you see this? Paul, what about this? Then, you know, then, then it's being successful because people want to talk about it.
About it. Good.
I think, yeah, yeah. I think the same thing. But I think it's like, if you see a majority of people that are happy, excited about where the town's going, like the direction they're going. I think that's the biggest thing. Like, we could have a plan and everything else and everybody could hate it. So, I mean, you need something that everybody's proud of and, and are buying into.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good. Commissioner Sun?
I think the more you do to make your town feel welcome, I can't say this enough, just like Washington DC belongs to us, right? Town belongs to this community. And the more you have people engaging, coming to the town, calling, emailing, believing that, hey, I can engage. You all want me to engage. I think that is success.
Yeah.
Not being afraid, knowing where to go, who to talk to.
Yeah.
Having that comfort level, I think that's successful and that shows that you have an engaged community versus them online going, I don't know who to talk to.
Yeah.
Right? But we're reaching out enough so that they feel comfortable coming to ask and coming to find out what's going on.
So this engagement process should feel welcoming to people.
Exactly.
Yeah. Great. Yeah. All right. So these were three questions that we wanted to make sure that we asked. And as we wrap up here, I know just a few minutes early, I know we want to make sure we, we don't, we don't hold up things. But do you have any other questions or just anything else you want to make sure you get from this or that you, questions for us? Mayor?
Yeah, I have one. I know, and this, this is not coming from me. This is coming from one of the citizens. And more I, more I, you know, let it sink in, the more I think, I think he's, he's on a good point here. You know, he, he, he fusions that, that we'll be, we'll be think of as the best town in Wake County, you know, for our park systems. And I think we're close, you know, we're doing that. We're working on that. For our recreational programs, and I know recreational programs are strong, you know, we've known, been known for strong recreation programs for a while. History restoration, and we're just starting that. We're just starting a history restoration. You know, you're working on some history stuff. But, you know, that's something I think is good. And then the other one is, is cultural diversity. And I think we're working on that too. But the idea is to be the best in Wake County on those things. Now, that means we got to get everybody, you know, on the same page to think about that.
In those three areas?
Huh?
Yeah, in those three areas.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, it's four. Actually, it's the park system, recreation programs, history restoration, and cultural diversity.
Okay.
And, you know, I, I don't know, it's something we'll have to talk about, but that would be a heck of a good program.
And a success would be Roseville being talked about by Raleigh Tourism.
Right.
That's a big success.
Exactly right.
By the CVB.
Yeah.
Definitely, we can build out the farm.
And I'll just give a plug for diversity, as I always do, because I think it's important. I think, I think you said it a while ago, that we're one of the most diverse boards in the state. I think that's important, that your board and your staff is diverse because our community is diverse. And so when you're inviting folks and you don't see certain people showing up.
Yeah.
We should seek them out.
Yeah.
Because you want to hear from those populations to say, what are you thinking? What are your ideas? What are your thoughts? So I think that's crucial for a growing town.
Yeah. And something we need to make sure we're doing as we engage the community in this process.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I guess the last thing, and I don't think we captured this somewhere, but probably need to capture it. I, I know quite a few board members does have passion for affordable housing type stuff. And one of the things I have kind of seen and experienced in the last few months when it comes to affordable housing is one thing to talk about future people, affordable housing, but we got a lot of work to do with people that's living here and the affordable housing that they're living in is becoming unacceptable. And how do you deal with that? So I think, I think that's important, especially the ones that's living here, so.
Well, with that, we're going to close, oh, did you, Commissioner Olson, did you?
No, I was just thinking aloud, when he said that also somehow engaging some type of financial literacy program to assist with that. But that's another conversation. Have her thinking outside the box.
Can I say one thing? Danielle, thank you very much for your notes. But on there, we'd like, I, I would like for us to be recognized by Raleigh Tourism, not Roseville.
Thank you for catching that. Yeah. One of, one of our rules is own, you know, own the board. So if we don't get it right, let us know. No need to be polite. All right. Well, with that, we're going to close our segment. This is really helpful to us. It helps us understand what you want to get out of this, kind of what are the things that you're thinking about. And as we, as we get ready for the staff retreat and the full day with you, this is all going to be really good input. So we're going to continue to work primarily with Eric to make sure we get ready for it. And certainly anything that you need out of this process, you know, we want to make sure that we come out of this with a really good plan that's going to help you be successful. Eric, anything to close on your end?
I just wanted to reiterate that we're on a journey with this. And so even after you go home, have any ideas, shoot them to me. Have any thoughts, be it anything that we cover from, hey, we did have this small went on, make sure this is counted for. Hey, this is something that I think we should be thinking about. Any ideas about reaching the community and engaging the community to get, to get them, especially the low-response areas. So we're coming off an election. I'll be looking at the data and see what are the low-response areas when it comes to the election. Try to let, help that guide us as we kind of reach out to the community as well. I just don't want it to be said that we did not try at the end of this. And that, and if we're making sure we're making the push and we're making sure the doors are open, make sure we're presenting all the opportunities for people to communicate with us and engage with, engage with us and to give us their take on what they want to see and how they want to see us evolve. By, by making sure we do that, then we can reinforce the, the confidence that people have in the strategic plan as we develop our departmental work plans and move forward over the next four years and implement it. So just feel free to let us know. Reach out to myself, the manager, and we'll be sure that that information makes it into their notes and is taken into account.
My last ad, I promise, is two things real quick. One is bring the public along. Tell the public what the plan is. Tell them when you're doing the plan. Do the plan and then tell them what you've done so far and where you are. Because this is not people's day-to-day lives. It's just not, right? And then the other thing I want to add, something on behalf of Commissioner-elect Long, who could not be here tonight, he would say, keeping the charm in Roseville. He ran on that. He grew up here and that was his big slogan about keeping the charm in Roseville. I think that makes us unique and stand out from the rest of the triangle. So I just wanted to add that on his behalf.
Thank you all very much. Mayor? Yeah?
Thank you. Appreciate you guys coming out. Great job, great presentation. Looking forward to all the work that's coming up. Thanks, Eric, taking the leadership of this. And also just Kelly and all the staff just standing behind you. So appreciate everybody's effort. Thanks a lot. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. We'll see you soon.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to take a recess for, let's say, five minutes. Five minutes, do it. So we're going to do a five-minute and then we'll come back and we will call to order the Roseville regular town board meeting after this. So I am going to adjourn without opposition on this work session. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I will call to order the Roseville Board of Commissioners. This is a regular work session meeting. And we got just one, two, three, four items on the agenda for tonight. Abbreviated agenda. So the first one is receive our 2022, 2023 audit report. So Amy, I think you are going to kick that off, maybe, so.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My part of this presentation is very short. I am really here to introduce to you the accountants from Cherry Becker that the staff have been working with for the past few months to prepare the financial statements. So they will be up here in just a moment to give you the results, to share, you should have a copy of the statements there in front of you. They'll be here to talk you through what entailed their work with the financial audit. So with that, I'm just going to turn things right over to, we have April Adams and Albert Ong from Cherry Becker here to update you on financial status.
Well, good afternoon or good evening. We're excited to be here to give you the results of the audit. So here's, again, what we're going to cover tonight. Basically, we're going to introduce ourselves and then give you the results of the audit and the single audit. That's a new thing for the town. Just talk a little bit about internal controls and how they are a part of our audit and how we report on those. Corrected and uncorrected misstatements, as if there were any journal entries, we're required to identify those for you. And then we got a whole bunch of other required communications that the audit standards that we perform the audit under require us to communicate to you as the board. So that's basically the balance of the agenda there. So for the client service team, I like this slide not only to introduce ourselves, but just remind you that we work for the board. You guys hire us and we report to you, even though we execute the entire audit mostly talking with the staff of the town. But we do work for you. I'm April Adams. I'm the engagement partner. I'm the one that signs the audit report on behalf of the firm and takes responsibility for the work that we do. With me tonight is Albert Ong. He's actually going to present a couple of slides with, with me tonight. Another important thing to point out on this slide is that Scott Anderson was your second reviewer. And why that's important is because Cherry Becker requires every audit report that goes out to be reviewed by another partner or partner level person in order to ensure the quality control over what we do. And so we also had another senior in staff that helped along with the work and some other staff as well, but those were the primary associates that worked on the engagement. So the results of the audit, the most important thing for tonight is just to let you know that we did complete your audit. We dated it November 7. And that we did issue what we call unmodified opinions. Those are, that's the results you want. That's a clean opinion. That's the highest level of assurance we can give you as an audit firm, that your statements are free from material misstatement. Also, this year, well, I think we've issued a Yellow Book Report. That just shows you the two different standards that we perform the audit under. But we also issued what we call a federal compliance opinion. And so that covered some of the grants that the town is now administering throughout the year. So this slide details out what that is. So you guys received the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, just like every other municipality in the state and the country. Those are your ARPA funds, or also known as ARPA funds. And so we audited those, and also the highway planning and construction grant. And so when I say we audited those, what I mean is that we looked at, we are required to look at 14 different compliance requirements and evaluate whether the compliance with those is directed material to the grant. So those are things like, did the, was the grant spent on allowable costs and allowable activities? Were the reporting requirements met? If there was a match required, did the town contribute its match correctly? Procurement is a requirement, you know, there's certain rules that have to follow with that money and stuff like that. So those are the types of things that we're auditing. It's, it's pretty in-depth visit of those grants and making sure that they were administered correctly. All right. So internal controls, this is a lot of words in the slides. Basically, what it's done is lifted up the words out of the opinion. But the things to, for me to highlight from this is that we do a lot of work with internal controls. The audit standards require that. But we don't actually opine on internal controls. We're only required to report whether we find any deficiencies in what we look at. So what we do look at is we identify the significant transaction cycle. So that's things like, how does the town receive cash? How does the town disperse cash? That used to only just be, you know, the town writing checks, but now the town can disperse checks through wires and EFTs and all that kind of stuff. So we look at all of that. And then we look at payroll, and then we look at the financial close and reporting process. And so what that is, is how does the information get out of that financial system and into the report you have tonight? So we look at all the controls around that to make sure that the right information and the right numbers get in that report. So I am happy to report, there's two different kinds of deficiencies that we report. One would be a significant deficiency, and one would be a material weakness. But in your case, we are not reporting any material weaknesses. And we can't say that we didn't find any significant deficiencies. So just a weird function of the accounting standards, but you can defer that from the fact that we're not reporting one. If that makes sense. They could still exist, I guess, is why we say that we don't, there aren't any, we just didn't find any. All right. So adjusting journal entries. So from, from any audit, from the time that we receive the trial balance from the client to the time that we issue the report, we are tracking whether any adjustments are found. Because we assist in writing the financial statements for the town, we did, we did have to do a couple of journal entries. And this isn't a reflection upon the town's accounting staff or Amy. This is just, these are just things that we identify as part of writing the report that needed to be adjusted. So the first one was just to reclass some expenses related to subscriptions. There's a new accounting standard that Albert's going to talk about on his first slide. This entry is related to that. It's just at the fund level, at the general fund level statement, there was a need to move the expenses that were booked correctly as subscriptions into being debt service to be in accordance with the audit standards. So not a big deal, just something I have to report to you. And then the second one was restricting some unrestricted cash on the balance sheet is unrestricted, too restricted for reporting purposes. Again, doesn't affect the day-to-day operations, just the way we had to report things. And so uncorrected misstatements, this would be if we found adjustments that, together with management, we decided didn't need to be booked in order for the statements to be correct, but we didn't have any of those scenarios. So no need to talk any further about that. All right. So now I'm going to hand it over to Albert.
Thanks, April. So part of the standards, we're required to communicate management's selection and use of certain accounting principles, all of which are disclosed in the note one to the financials. As April mentioned, this year, they implemented GASB 96, subscription-based information technology, technology arrangements. Basically, like leases last year, subscription agreements that the town has, you have to record a right-of-use asset and related liability. And then, as she also said about that one adjustment, reclassing certain operating expenses into debt service. And we noted no inappropriate accounting policies or practices as part of our audit.
What are subscription assets and liabilities? Because I, I don't know what that is. I'm sitting up here thinking of a magazine subscription.
Yeah, so it's like, they have like Microsoft 365, I think, software, things.
Software, gotcha. Okay.
And they have to be longer term. So like, if you had software agreements that you were only month-to-month in term, you know, you could terminate at any time. Those aren't accounted for. It's just ones that you're obligated for down the road.
Longer term, gotcha. Perfect. Thank you.
All right. We are also required to communicate related party transactions as part of our audit review for any of these. Make sure they're, if there were any, they're for a legitimate business purpose of the town, and there were no issues as far as being in compliance with laws and regulations, of which we noted no such issues as far as related party transactions. We are also required to communicate any transactions that had a lack of authoritative guidance or any significant unusual transactions. Again, during our audit, we noted none of this. So there were no issues as far as significant unusual transactions. We are also required to communicate significant estimates related to some financial statement accounts. The most significant ones we have listed here are related to depreciable assets and depreciation. This is all your fixed assets, equipment, all that stuff, buildings, as well as your pension liabilities, elders, liosa, and OPEB liabilities and related accounts, as well as your accrued compensation. We reviewed management estimate and how they decide to come up with these, you know, numbers and balances. And we, as part of our audit, we felt everything was reasonable and appropriate. And lastly, the financial statement disclosures, including the footnotes, are all neutral, consistent, and clear. This slide just talks about our independence during planning and through our audit, we're required to make sure we maintain our independence. The two non-test services we have here, preparing the financial statements and completing the data collection form and submitting, submitting that to the federal audit clearinghouse, both of which are reviewed by Amy and finance to make sure, and they have the knowledge and expertise to review our work. And then through, during planning and through our audit, there were no independence impairment issues or any issues on our end, so. Next two slides just talk about other required communications. Throughout the audit, we had no difficulties or disagreements with management. On our end, we consulted with no other auditors outside of the engagement team that you saw in the first two slides. And then we obtained a management representation letter about certain reps. On the other side, management did not consult with other accountants about the audit process or the financials for this year. And to our knowledge, there were no such consultations. There were no other findings or issues that we noted as part of our audit process or, and results of our audit testing. There's no fraud or illegal acts. And then there were no events or conditions noted that would create a substantial doubt about the town's ability to continue as a going concern. And I will pass it back to April.
Yeah, I just want to cover two things on this next slide that, as I've been giving this presentation over the last couple of years, people have asked questions. But the fraud and illegal acts, our audit is not designed to look for those specifically. This is just telling you that while we were in there looking at things, we didn't come across any. So just wanted to make sure that you were clear on that. We didn't do a forensic audit and look at, look at it to that level to where we could say that there was no fraud or illegal acts happening here. And then the going concern is just basically for giving, we have to evaluate whether you'll be here a year from now. So we believe all things are pointing in that direction. So no going concern. All right. So this slide is basically just talking about our opinion and how it, how it covers the various pieces within that financial statement you have in front of you. Our opinion is on the basic financial statements. So that is on the, the, as a whole, financial, financial statements that are up front. So we have what we call the government-wide statements that cover both the governmental and business type. And then there's some major fund statements behind that. That's what our opinion covers, is those statements and the footnotes. This is saying the supplementary information, which is the non-major funds that you'll find after the footnotes, that we give an in relation to opinion, basically saying that those statements tie up to the front, therefore, you can rely upon our opinion for those statements. And then the supplementary information, that is your management discussion and analysis that you'll find at the very front of your statements, and the 10-year pension and OPEB information that you find just after the notes. We don't give an opinion on that. We do review it and make sure that it doesn't contradict what our opinion, the stuff that we did opine on is, as well. So we just like to be clear about that. All right. So upcoming financial reporting changes, basically, this is just giving you on the horizon, new accounting standards that are out there that are going to affect the town in the future. I'm going to, I guess I can talk about GASB 100. Really, this is a situational standard that you need to apply if a situation occurs, such as if we were to come in and audit next year and find an adjustment related to the previous year, then we would need to look at the standard, how they want that reported. Or if the town were to decide to change some of their, their accounting practices and account for something differently, that's also allowed. We, it discusses how you would report that. The more important one to me here is the GASB 101. This is not for next fiscal year, but 2025. This is related to compensated absences. And you, if you've looked at the statements, you'll be like, hmm, there's already compensated absences on there. What's on there now is just the vacation time for your employees that, that they can take. What's not there that's compensated is sick leave. Typically, most entities' sick leave is not cash paid out if they were to leave. And so the standards have not required that to be reported. But now they are including the sick leave, and they want to know how much sick leave is actually ever going to be paid out, is what you need to record. So you can imagine how tough that is to predict whether your staff is going to use their sick leave or keep it. And then you got it compounded with, is the sick leave going to actually be used as part of their service credits for their retirement plan? So you don't want to double count it in the retirement plan and on your statements. So we are working with the state, trying to figure out from historical data, what, what is the right estimate and percentage of stuff to keep on your books.
So in all that, did you just say that it was not counted before, they could not take it with them when they left, but now again?
I don't know the exact rules as far as this particular entity. We haven't gone that far. But our, most, most government entities don't have their sick leave recorded because most of them didn't, didn't meet the standard to where it should be recorded, which typically is because it's not paid out when they, when they leave.
Useless.
Any other questions? That's all I have, or all we had.
How often is this audit conducted?
Annually. So the state requires, the state statutes require your, the town to have an audit annually. So the state requires, the state statutes require your, the town to have an audit annually.
That's good.
Thank you for the presentation.
So just for clarity, you didn't find anything that we should bring to our attention that we should fix or change policies, procedures, anything? That we don't have under control, that we should have under control?
No, I mean, if, if we had that, we would've reported it. There's, there's minor things that we noted along the way, but nothing that we did, we felt needed to be discussed here.
You have a question for?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is this required by law now?
The audit?
Yes.
Not all towns do them, does it?
No, all towns are required.
I know, they was talking about holding, holding government payments or taxes or something back if you didn't do an audit, so I was thinking a few towns didn't do them.
There are quite a few towns that are late in submitting their audit, it's a, it's a, I don't know how to say it, it's, it's a situation that the, the state's looking at and trying to figure out, and that was one of the ways of trying to motivate towns to get their audits done.
So did they pass that bill to hold money back if you didn't do all it?
I think they did.
I don't know for sure, but there are a number of towns that are delinquent, some to the point of having the LGC step in.
Which most towns, if they're delinquent, they have issues and holding money back to just make the issue worse, so you know.
Are there any fines associated with that, tardiness?
Well, I think that's, that's part of what that new law is trying to open up.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
We're happy to not be one of those towns.
That's right.
Thank you, April and Albert.
We can pay for audit. Thank you. And thank you, Amy, for helping to pull that together for them. Good job. Appreciate it.
Good question.
Okay, item, next item is a continuation of the legislative hearing and consideration of approval ordinances to annex and rezone 1216 Rollsville Road. I think we left the public hearing open, so I'll start off with getting a brief summary from the staff of where we, anything different from last meeting, then I get to have the applicant to have opportunity to, to present anything, and then we'll ask for any public comments again.
Thank you, sir. Technology here, one second.
Let's do it, doing what it does.
All right, thank you, sir. Yes, this is a continued legislative hearing and consideration for MAP Amendment 2205 and voluntary annexation petition 2302 for a project referred to as 1216 Rollsville Road. A very brief update here since our last meeting on this case just eight days ago. Included in the packet and also a hard copy was presented to you at the beginning of the meeting of the revised conditions of approval. This slide here in red is the new or changed information, black is the original. So condition one was rewritten for some clarity. Condition four is brand-new, conditions two and three remain the same. I can go through those in just a second. I also have for our comparison, if you will, the conditions of approval that were in the November 8th packet, should we get there. This is an exhibit of the concept sketch plan that is referenced now in the conditions and was in the packet originally, and is still subject to this. The applicant has provided a number of pictures of some projects that, if we get to that, he may wish to talk to, and then I've got your proposed motions for this evening. So we can go back to the conditions, and I will briefly go through, let me get my cursor to the, please. So again, condition one has been fleshed out and more, made more specific and binding here to quickly detail how the sketch plan relates to commitments. Part A speaks to the general location of the non-residential. Basically, this eliminates that whole pre-planning board, post-planning board, two concept plans that were in your original packet. This gives the developer, the applicant, the freedom to move the non-residential component around on the site, does not commit them specifically to the site that's in the, the drawing at this point, and that would be done at the next stages of development, preliminary subdivision or site development plan. B, this, this is a reduction or change to the minimum amount of square footage per the, the application as it was presented to the board eight days ago, where it was 30,000, it is now 20,000. C is the commitment or the, the solution to providing a western street stub on the property, to the property that's generally known as the 98-acre make, 98-acre Merritt tract where the pin ending in 6815. So at the next stage of development, preliminary subdivision, the applicant will find a way to stub a road to that property, and, and the technical review committee staff will review that, et cetera, for compliance with the LDO for that. So that, that was a point of consideration last time, and so this condition ensures that that will be done, just the exact location will not be known at this point in time, but it will be addressed at preliminary subdivision. Then condition four gets to the donation of one town home dwelling unit to a charitable nonprofit organization. This does include the request to, for the town to remit the recreation development impact fee, transportation development impact fee, and town residential permit processing fees. What that results in is around $6,000 in waived fees for that one town home. And then again, condition two is voluntary architectural conditions for the town home dwelling units. Those are things that are not compulsory required in the land development ordinance. And three is basically a recommitment to the traffic impact analysis recommendations for off-site improvements. So it just kinda solidifies those. So that is the state of the conditions since our last meeting on November 8th. Again, I have the November 8th version where there were three, and then the concept drawing, if we wish to look at that. The applicant is present, and he may wish to do a little presentation or simply react to questions.
Any questions for Michael? Michael, you feel like these conditions kinda met the intent that was at, the board was asking for?
I think the items that were brought up at the board, and again, we didn't wanna wordsmith and spend time at that time, you know, at the dais recreating the language. I believe with the help of the town attorney and the applicants and all staff, we've, we've built in the, the items that were dealt with there. Now, there is a change to the non-residential square footage, and I don't know if that's something that the board wishes to consider, but the donation of a town home unit is fleshed out there. Staff feels that it's very implementable at the next stages of development. And again, the, the other kinda site design things, we feel are captured in those A, B, and C under, under number one. Really, A and C gets at the crux of some of those unknowns there with the site plan.
Any questions for Michael?
No, sir.
Thank you. We will hear from the applicant now. Anything you want to add?
I do. Thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I hope everyone's doing well. I was, interestingly enough, stuck on planes all day today to try and get here this evening, so I'm glad I'm here. I got a call after our last meeting from one of the commissioners, and it candidly caught me off, off-guard. It was an exceptional conversation, and the crux of it was, what's the rush, Robert? You need to slow down. And I kinda thought through it a little bit and realized sometimes the communication bridge between what happens in planning and what happens here with you all is considerably different. So I wanted to paint a quick picture, talk about some of my past projects, so you guys can get a feel for what we do and how we do it, and then obviously convene to questions and answers. But I bought this property in the early 2020, and when I bought it, the planning department was nonexistent at the time. As any developer, when I buy property, my goal is to develop. It probably took me, by the time staff got in, and I think everyone knows how I feel about Mike and the team, they're exceptional, I'm not used to that in most cities, so please don't, please don't lose the team, they're very good at what they do, but I had to wait a year before I submitted my first plan on 1216, and then when it got submitted, I was asked to wait for a TIA report that I believe the board is not aware of, and I said, not a problem, how long can it take to get a TIA done? Well, I, we ordered it in March, and because we just missed school travel time at the time, I was told I had to wait till October, when I felt like another year, it was really only six months, but the TIA report didn't come in till the following year in February. So I'm thinking to myself, this is, this is not what I signed up for, I'm here to try and build community and do, do the right thing and follow UDOs and the community guidelines. Once the TIA came back, between the TIA and our August meeting of this year, I've probably been working on this for just over two years. To me, it seemed like a very long time, and to the commissioner's point, you all had no idea of the things I was dealing with behind the scenes. So I'm thinking to myself, I'm not rushing, I'm really just trying to get to the state where I can develop the site, we've got a lot of money in it. And long story short, when August came around and the board asked to move it to November session, I'm thinking to myself, the TIA that was ordered has nothing to do with my property and has no real impact on 1216, which made me think even further that the board's really not interested in the project, and I didn't know what else to think at the time. Clearly, that was not the case. As I mentioned to the board last time I was here, my wife and I moved here in 2012. We live in Rollsville. We have done, I say we, cause my wife has to sign off on just about everything I do. That only makes sense, right, Commissioner Austin? I see you smiling. How do I move slides here, Mike?
Use the arrow buttons.
Arrow?
Yeah.
Okay. Couple other things about me and the family. My wife and I, again, have been here since 2012, and we've done a lot of different things in the communities. I'm not sure if you've heard with love from Jesus, but we're a pretty consistent contributor to the group, they're down in Raleigh, they help the homeless, they're big on allowing people to walk through the site and get food off the countertops, furniture, shelter, allow them to sleep better, more comfort. We've been contributing to the Christian Relief Fund since 2012. Actually, one of the students from Africa, we got her graduating into law school this year, and we, we do a lot in the local churches. I bring that up for one reason only. We, we talk about affordable housing, and the VA conversation came up, and it was obviously a commitment from your part. We are big on giving back to the community. We work in Savannah right now on an affordable housing project. I actually emailed one of the commissioners, a sit panel production model that really allows affordable housing into communities that most people don't even, aren't even aware they're out there. Extremely affordable, very cheap, but one of the best construction models on the planet, hurricanes can't knock these things down. So I bring it up because we are big on the support, we love Rollsville, and I'm glad I had the conversation to really slow down. I, I wanna show the board what I've done in the past, where we're going with this project, and give you a little bit of insight on Pine Glow, so I'll be quick. This is where my headquarters is, we built this in Wake Forest, this is our design, my architectural design team, you guys probably know Jim Shear, John Fraser was part of this project as well. It's been received exceptionally well, the building does great, it's, in my mind, a great design. This is one of the concept plans for the site in Rollsville. We have two options, steel-built, which is this building, or stick-built, which is the wine 101, the old Buku building. We built this with stick and bricks, and the main reason we did this is because we wanted it to look more like the local community. I didn't want it to look like a standalone building that didn't fit in Heritage One or Two.
Where is that at?
This is right, right across the street from Harris Tito and Rogers Road, Mayor.
Behind the Bank of America, I think.
Right behind the Bank of America, that's correct. What's the pizza place right there, too? It's right.
How many square feet is that building?
That's 9,000 square feet. It was initially intended to be a dentist office and medical space. It turned into retail. That's one of the beautiful things about this style of building. Now, colors and all the design stuff has changed, but this is one of the concepts that I would put forward for the Rollsville site, depending on what else goes on out there. I'm probably gonna be the only, the first guy to, to the party on the commercial side, which usually means future developers have to follow my design plan. But again, it's a canvas that we can really create. My goal is to make sure it fits with the community and doesn't look like a standalone building that had no thought or process behind it. One of the other things that I wanted to highlight as well, this is my headquarters building, that brown square section is where I sit every day and work, which is about a mile and a half from here. I, I bring this slide up so you guys and gals can understand how we build as developers. If you look at, may I, may I come to the screen real quick? Okay. So this is our building, I had the opportunity to put more buildings behind the space and more closer to the properties, that would've been a heck of a lot more profitable for us as, as a family. If you look at our, the building beside us where they've put that stuff, that long square footage directly on top of the backyard, I had the opportunity to do that. That's not something I was interested in. I would've made three times the profit, and we just decided not to push forward with it because, again, we believe in the community aspect and making sure people are happy, and again, it's a great building, and that may be one of the rendering designs I bring in for that site. With that being said, that's a dentist office we build in Wake Forest. Most of you probably have heard of Spanish for Fun, this is one of their most successful buildings. I built that with the owner, he has four other locations in Raleigh. I talk a lot about local, I'm not a national guy, I'm never gonna, knock on wood, at this stage of the game, I'm not interested in working with nationals. Superior Dentistry is our design team, Jim, John. This is, this photo does not do the space justice. If you've driven by it, you probably know what I'm talking about.
It's on South Main, yeah.
Main Street, yeah, it's a beautiful building. So we're real serious and intentional about how we build, what we do, what we put on the site. I was told this was televised and on YouTube, I was trying to avoid doing this, but I'm gonna do it anyway, so you guys can understand our plan with Pine Glow. We are very close to submitting our final site plan. This is an ad hoc version, we've been spending a lot of time and energy on it, but this is the design plan. You guys talked a lot about community tonight, and there's nothing more I can think of that Rollsville needs or any of the major cities in Raleigh. My son plays hockey, I'm his coach. You go to any of the hawkerinis, these basketball, there's no restaurants, there's no food, there's no gym, there's no walking trails. It's really tough for families to roll in there with three kids and have nothing to do. That was the intention behind this. We also have really big support, I think most of you have heard through WHO, one of the largest sports groups here in Raleigh, but this is not the final design plan, but very, very close. So we are gonna have basketball, volleyball, pickleball inside, pickleball outside. At present, we've got a hot sheet of hockey ice coming in, 10,000 square feet of office space presently is the plan, a beautiful restaurant on two stories that overlooks the walking trail where the pickleball courts are, there's gonna be fire pits, dog parks, you guys are gonna see a lot more of that very, very soon. And when the commissioner said to me, Robert, how do we know what you're doing? We haven't seen you in two years. I'm thinking to myself, you and the planning board talk once in a while, but clearly, that, that's not the case. And so, I apologize, there is no rush, but I just hope you can understand why I'm trying to get this to the table in regards to the next steps on planning. This is some of the renderings, this is not a commitment, but this is some of the rendering that we're working on for the site in Pine Glow. The reason you see a lot of windows is, I certainly don't want COVID to come back and shut us all down, so we're planning to have enough windows and door, open door space, so when COVID comes back, the government can't shut us down. We can still use the space, keep it a community center. My goal, I know that, I know that the big center in Wake Forest, the, the big space has shut down, my goal is to be able to do things like reunions, work with the city, you guys need big meetings, that basketball site is a beautiful location to do all kinds of different things, community meetings. Our goal is to really push community and kids through that space, really developing the youth of Raleigh, specifically Rollsville. So I wanted to give the board a little bit of insight in who we are, and personally, my wife and I invest in everything we do. I'm not a big corporation, we're local, when we make capital, we reinvest back into the community. We're really excited about the project, and again, I, for whatever reason, felt like the board knew all the things I had been through and really wasn't interested in us coming in and developing, so that, that was my bad, and I'm really glad I had a conversation with one of the commissioners. So, I'm excited to be here, I love Rollsville, I'm looking forward to help build the town. We are very big on the affordable housing side of things. I'm actually working with an industrial firm in Sanford, 300,000 square feet on the industrial side, we're very active in that, and I've got the best builder on the east coast in industrial space. I know you guys are looking at all that fun stuff. Long story short, I would love to partner with Rollsville, I hope we can get through tonight with an approval, you guys all know where my head is and how I feel about it. And with that being said, I really appreciate everybody's attention tonight, and I'll open the floor for questions and comments. One other thing I'll say, I've been on planes back and forth to Montreal, the, Mr. Neal called me, I didn't make any changes to those comments, they were really just a verbal confirmation I had, other than the 20,000 square feet, so the verbiage you're seeing up there was notes taken from Rollsville that night. Just wanted to finish with that.
Yeah, and, and thank you for the update on the Pine Glow, we get a lot of questions about what's, what's taking so long, when is it gonna happen, so, and you, it sounds like you decided to keep the building.
Mayor, I was thinking, you guys didn't want me here, I was selling everything, to be honest, I was going somewhere else. And so, not only am I keeping And so not only am I keeping the space, I own one and a half acres right around the corner. We've got really cool excitement on that site as well, potentially dental. So I've got three sites I'm working on actively right now with Roseville. Again, all my own personal capital investment. It's a lot of capital injection, but I'm committed. I've taken a deep breath, and, uh, I realize where the disconnect is, and so I apologize for that. But I think as towns, you guys are all talking, and I realize where some of the disconnect is coming. So nothing's for sale. Everything's pushing forward to build. And this plan is extremely recent, so we're, I'm working on the final site plan. This model, uh, without getting into crazy detail, will probably get blown up in 15 states in the next three years. We have really, really strong interest from one of the large sporting, the commissioners in one of the large sporting events. There are no sporting facilities like this. Most of them are beat down, no food, I mean, you guys have heard me say it. This is a really exciting project, and I'm looking forward to get started on it.
Thank you.
Just want to put in a plug for a massage place. We have some dentists. I'm just saying, just some subliminal messaging, massage, you know, yeah, just saying.
Okay.
Yeah.
And restaurants.
And of course, restaurants.
With paper, not paper, but-
I could name restaurants for you.
I'm a restaurant, I'm a restaurant guy. We've actually got a restaurant partially committed. I just-
I would really like to see a bonefish. Come on.
So thank you. Questions? Questions for the applicant here? Any questions? Well, let's get through the public hearing. I may bring you back up, so, you know, if we got a question-
Appreciate everybody's time. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, team. Thank you. By the way, I never looked at that photo. You guys are really smiling big out there. This is Commissioner Austin. I don't know what happened there.
He knew the smile has to-
Yeah. Right.
So Michael, any, any rebuttal? Any rebuttal, anything?
No, sir. I, I'm here for questions. Uh, want to just make sure that the town attorney feels we're, we're good with the set of conditions. Uh, we, we are trying to get applicants to sign the conditions, and then we can scan and maybe even record those, uh, et cetera, just to make all of this tie up a little neater at the tail end. So, um, Mr. Mr. Shar's, um, mention of the conditions, again, we'd be looking for that signature of that. Again, conditions are voluntary, brought forth, and, um, Mr. Shar did not make any mention of any opposition to the draft language that is before you, so I take that as acquiescence that these are his, uh, proposed conditions. And so that's, that's, again, that's the real change here tonight, is just those revised conditions.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Michael. So, um, I, I know we, we had opened a public hearing up for public, uh, last time, but if anybody in the public, we're limited just to the condition changes. Anybody want to speak in favor or against one of these condition changes, uh, this is an opportunity. Anybody, anybody want to come up? Anybody? I know, I do know as a few people had concerns about the connection there, so they're not here, so I'm assuming they're, they're good with it because they're not here to speak on it, so. So with that, any final questions, Board, before I close the public hearing? Last, last chance? You good, Michael? Okay. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I will turn it over to the board for consideration on this, uh, can we change it to the next slide? If you don't mind? So it's in, it's in your hands, Board.
I'll make a motion to approve MA 2205.
I'll second.
Got a motion to second? The first bullet there, any, uh, any other discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I think that's unanimous, Madam Clerk, second one?
Uh, I make a motion to adopt a plan consistency statement and statement of reasonable, reasonableness for MA 2205.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion from the board? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any no? Unanimous, I think, and, and the third one?
And a motion to approve ANX 2302.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion and second. Any other discussion from the board? Not hearing any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I think all three approved. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thanks a lot. Cool. Thank you.
That's the first-
That's the first hand cut of our version.
All right. The next item is consideration for appointments of the Board of Adjustment. And, and it's a little, um, understanding, it's a little urgency on this one, being that we canceled a November meeting, and we really need to get some people on this board. You did advertise it?
Yes, we did advertise it.
You did get applicants, and I think that's on page, uh, in your, in your agenda package, it's on page, uh, five. You want to look on page five? And with that, I will turn it over to you, Robin. Anything else you want to add?
Yes, as the mayor stated, we advertised specifically for the BOA, and the closing for applications was November 1st. And we received applications from the, actually, four out of the five people mentioned in my memo. We, uh, had one applicant or one person who indicated that he had applied. It turns out he did not. So staff is having the board please consider for the Board of Adjustment, Mark Kamoski, Melissa Elliott, Frank Pierce, and Jeffrey Wuchich, and Mr. Wuchich, if I mispronounced your name, I do apologize if you're watching.
And for Clerk and Board-
The reason that it is, uh, urgent is we do have two cases pending, and we do have members currently on the Board of Adjustment that can sit for those two cases until the end of the year, but all three of the members' terms expire December 31st.
Yeah, and just for Clerk, I think the only one that's serving now out of the fore is Melissa.
That's correct. Melissa Elliott is an incumbent.
Melissa Elliott is on the-
And she would like to stay on the-
She's asking to be reappointed some way.
Okay.
So with this appointment, will that fill the board?
It will not completely fill the board. We will still have one remaining, uh, we'll have one ETJ member that we will need in addition to Frank Pierce, who has applied as an ETJ member, should you appoint him. And that will balance the board out to have three in-town members and two ETJ members, which is, uh, ideal.
But we're going to probably have to re-advertise for that fifth one. And it has to be approved by the Wake County Board.
That's correct, yes.
You can, if you're ready.
I'm making a motion to approve the, um, the, um, I forgot. What are you looking at?
Cheat sheet.
I'll second.
Just for clarity, we need to put expiration dates in here. I think, I think you said, uh, uh, the first two, Melissa and Mark, will be expiring in December 31, 2025, and Jeff will return, will expire December 31, 2026. And what, when with Frank, 26?
The 26th as well, yes.
Okay. So Frank Pierce be 20-
And the reason being, so we don't go through this again where they're all expiring at the same time. General statutes do allow us to stagger those expiration.
That makes sense.
By statute, these dates have to be, um, they can't be all the same here. They have to be staggered, I guess, staggered. So we got a motion and approve, and you okay with those dates?
Yes.
Okay. Got a motion and second?
Second.
All right. Uh, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, you should be able to meet this month in December, so.
Thank you.
And I think, I think you got two items you've kind of been waiting to get, is that right?
Yes.
So it sounds good.
About our two cases, yes.
Thank you. Thank you for working on it, Rob. Appreciate that. Well, that, that completes the business for the night, except for the item six, which is the closed session.
Mr. Mayor? I move that the board go into closed session regarding two matters. One, to consult with the town attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege, and two, to discuss a confidential personnel matter. The board would enter closed session pursuant Chapter 143, Sections 318.11, A3, and A6 of the North Carolina general statutes.
Second. Okay. Got a motion and second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any one opposed? So we're going to adjourn this meeting, and then we'll go into closed session, and we will come back out of adjournment, once we get out of closed session and open this back up. That is the plan, right? You are. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, we'll recess for, for the closed session. So at this point, we in recess on the, uh, on the, um, meeting tonight. So with that- So with that...
Ready?
Yes.
Everybody got your mics back on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we are out of recess. This is Roseville Board Commissioners, November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We were in closed session with discussion with attorney. We do have a motion that we're going to make, and I'll turn it over to attorney for a brief introduction to that, so the people out in the community will know what this is about.
Thank you, Mayor. The pending motion, I understand, relates to the town's ongoing efforts to require to acquire a public greenway that have proven unfruitful after nearly two years of negotiations and discussion. At this point, the best approach for the town is to move forward with eminent domain under the town's statutory authority.
Thank you. Any other commissioner want to make a comment on this? Not hearing any. I think Paul, you're prepared to make a motion?
I am. I move that the town authorized the town attorney to commence an eminent domain action consistent with the town's statutory authority to acquire an easement for construction and operation of a public greenway across that certain real property identified as two-one-two West Young Street in Roseville.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion on this? Not hearing any? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anonymous, matter of fact, thank you. Okay, well, appreciate it, board. I think we got some business taken care of tonight. This is our last real work session and real meeting for the year. As we saw earlier in the first presentation, we got a lot of work done, so making a lot of progress and appreciate all that everybody's done. And I know Commissioner Sutton, this is your last meeting. You may come next meeting, I'm not sure if you will come or not, but if you do, you're welcome. But this is really the last meeting with official business in eight years in that one seat, so that's a long time. And really has been my honor of working alongside you, and you've done a lot for economic development, and you're going to continue to do that, so looking forward to the future on that for sure.
Certainly, thank you.
Yep, and the other commissioner that's leaving the board, Michelle Medley, served eight years also, and she has a lot of passion. I think one of her big passions was affordable housing, and she put a lot of work in that, a lot of passion in that, and I think, you know, to challenge this board is keep her vision for affordable housing going, and maybe, you know, we can get some accomplishments in that. And she served a really great eight-year career serving liaison to the planning board and also mayor pro temp for two years, so congratulate her in really a good service for the community. As we know, you know, with Commissioner Sutton leaving, I think you can very much contest to it, it's work, it's hard work, and it's a lot to that, and just really appreciate both of y'all's efforts with that. Everybody have a great Thanksgiving coming up, spend some time with your family, maybe some trips. I know I'm going out of town a couple of trips over the holidays and looking forward to that and getting some R and R, so y'all enjoy your families, enjoy your time off, and we don't meet again until December the what?
Fifth.
Fifth, December the fifth, so we have a few days off there, so appreciate that. Enjoy your holidays. Any final thoughts from the board?
Yes, sir. On December eighteenth, this coming Saturday, nine o'clock at Arise will be the Veterans' Coffee, and that will be the last one for the year.
That's this weekend?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, eighteen.
And our Christmas parade will happen December third, first Sunday in December.
Yep, a few days before the meeting, yep. Okay, well, good, appreciate that. Any final thoughts from the commissioner? No?
Wasn't prepared for any. I do want to make an announcement, though. The food drive, the holiday ham food drive has started. I put some posts out there for ham eagles. They'll be collected here at the town hall, so if you look on social media, I put a couple of posts out there, so that has started.
Good. Yeah, and the final plug, I would say is the Roseville High School Rams football team is having a good postseason so far. They've won the first two games of playoffs. They played Fuquay Varina Friday night, and then if they can win that one, hopefully they can move on. They really are doing good under the new head coach, first-year head coach, Rayna Rackley, they're really doing a great job.
Yes.
I always say that, you know, they have the best gig in town on Friday night, so if you don't have anything on Friday night to do.
Affordable.
And affordable, eight bucks, I think, Paul?
Seven.
Seven?
Yeah.
Very reasonable, so make sure you do that.
Now, Mayor, I didn't have prepared remarks for tonight, but I do have some I want to say December fifth. I don't know if I have that opportunity.
Okay.
So, I don't know how that works.
Yeah, in fact, I think we'll, you know, it's probably no secret we're not planning to do a board thing, so if you can come, that'd be great.
I was like, I can't have it tonight.
But yes.
Yeah, so if you want to be here for sure.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Sounds good, okay, good enough. Anything else?